We'll go on to the next item, please.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members and superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they are, we will exclude these from the motion memo. We do have a supplement, which is number thirteen, and then there were some additions to the resignations, retirements, and changes.
Sure, those are at the table, I believe, and I'm sure everybody received an email.
I have a question on ten, but it doesn't need to be.
Just a question, right? Anybody want anything pulled?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Continue, please.
Okay. Move that action items numbered one through thirteen be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So.
So move.
Support.
So we have a motion adopted by Mr. Thorpe and supported by trustee Petrikov. We'll go into questions right now. Trustee Mosib, you had a question?
Yeah, so on testing, how are we, I know this was part of the report, but I don't think we even got to it. Are students needed to go in person to do testing? To or to, and obviously teachers need to be there to administer the testing? Is it done virtually?
We're looking at different options because obviously some parents also took the one hundred percent option. So Dr. Patterson is looking at that. I don't know if Ms. Farage is still here, but I do believe that we're looking at both. Or Mason, do you recall? We're looking at both options, I believe. And I know Dan is working on it, and it's required, so even if we're online, we have to do the testing. Oh, should she jump on?
Doctor.
Go ahead. Thank you. That was quick.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, for testing, we do have the, the option for a small group of students from one to three in group one to three to go to the buildings and also by appointments. But a lot of the testing is going to also happen in Zoom meetings. We do have that option and we got the directive from the, from M D E. We are required to administer K to eight and W A assessments in addition to some benchmark and progress monitoring assessments. We currently have also D R A being administered one-on-one in the schools by appointments only.
Trustee Mosip?
Yeah.
You good?
Uh, that's it.
Are there any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, here none and you see none. Madam Secretary, please have us do a roll call vote.
Lane, yes. McDonald, yes. Mead?
Yes.
Mosip?
Yes.
Petchlikoff?
Yeah.
Thorpe?
Yes.
President Barry?
Yes. Please attach a unanimous roll call vote and affirmative. Madam Secretary, can we have a summary of agenda action items?
Summary of agenda action items for tonight. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of blanket orders to Detroit's order to Detroit Salt Company. Number three, approval of contract to C D W hyphen G. Four to seven, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P twelve. Eight, approval of financial statement. Nine, approval of twenty twenty summer graduates. Congratulations. Number ten, approval of extended continuity of learning plan. Number eleven, approval of mode of instruction. Twelve, approval of donations. Thirteen, approval of appointment of Erin File as assistant principal at Woodworth Middle School.
Thank you. On that note, I'll turn it over to Dr. Maliko for a quick introduction.
Thank you, President Barry and Secretary Lane. So I, we have Erin. We're gonna ask him to log in now if he's still there. And we want to congratulate him. He is the new assistant principal at Woodworth Middle School. Let's give him a big round of applause, virtually. And we'll let him come in here. I know he's, I believe he's still there reading patiently.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko. I hope you guys can all hear me. I would like to take this time to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Maliko again, Mrs. Peterson, Ms. Ali Bazzi, my first principal at Woodworth Middle School, the central administration team, administration team as a whole, for not only this honor and opportunity to become assistant principal at Woodworth, but also for the multiple opportunities to grow, practice, and become a leader within the district way before this point tonight. Um, I would also like to thank Woodworth principal, Ms. Rima Hassan, newly appointed Snow Elementary Principal Mohammed Abdul Fatah, and Assistant Principal at Woodworth, Han Rita, for their mentorship and trust. It truly is an honor to continue working with the staff, students, and the Woodworth community. I began my career at Woodworth as a sixth grade mathematics teacher seven years ago, and I'm extremely excited to get the opportunity to become an administrator and remain there. Woodworth has become a second home, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Most of luck to you. Appreciate you.
President Barry?
Yes.
We're gonna have to call for an extension where I had almost the ten o'clock hour.
Well, I thought we're gonna wrap up next couple minutes. So is that a motion, trustee McDonald?
That is a motion.
Okay. We have a support by trustee Mosip. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote?
Lane, yes. McDonald, yes. Mead? Dr. Mead?
Oh, yes. I had it on mute.
Patty was asleep.
Yes.
Petchlikoff?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes, thank you. Where were we?
Discussion item.
Okay. Next item is discussion item.
None. Next is Board of Education Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Trustee Thorpe?
I'd received an email from someone in the community earlier today on some of the same items that have been discussed during citizen participation. I forwarded it to President Barry and Superintendent Maliko.
As far as that goes, I also have heard comments from staff and parents on the same topics, and everyone, of course, is very upset. Some are, think we should go back. Some think we shouldn't go back. But most people are thinking about them and their children. I don't think that as many people are thinking that the other factor is the health of, of the whole community and particularly the health of the teachers. We've just heard that at least six teachers have died in the United States in August, and this past weekend, a college president just died. So that is another factor that everyone needs to consider. I, I don't think any one of us likes the online. We all miss being together. I miss not being there with everyone. And when I'm with people, I, I, I feel nervous a lot because of this COVID. I- if I'm not nervous for my health, I'm nervous for everyone else, and I'm always thinking, could I have possibly been exposed? Could I expose someone else? So it, it's miserable, this whole thing. But I have heard a lot about it.
Yes, so we all received those emails, and nobody, nobody I've talked to likes this virtual online learning. We will get through this. We will get back into the classrooms, but until then, we're gonna take it very, very slowly. Everybody, I welcome everybody to reach out to me or any one of my colleagues. Everybody I've talked to, once they kind of hear us out, they kind of say, you know what? I never thought about it that way. I've had, I've had parents tell me that they're taking the students out of our district and they're taking them to, let's say, a private school or charter school because they have in-person learning. And you're welcome to do that. That's a parent decision. I, I don't question that. But also, at the same time, we've had, I've talked to some parents that, you know, pulled out their kids out of private schools that, you know, they're doing that in person and they're not comfortable with it, and they came into our district just for the simple fact that we are online or we have a virtual option. So there's no doubt in my mind, what parents do is the right decision for their family. We just have to, you know, as a board, as an administration here, we have to consider everybody else here. Like I said earlier, twenty-five percent of the population in the city of Dearborn, we're responsible for every day, every day. We're responsible for our staff. I mean, it breaks my heart when I find out that, you know, oh, there was a staff member at so-and-so building that just tested positive, or somebody, you know, caught the disease at one of our buildings. That, that, that just, just shatters us. I can't even imagine what, you know, trustee Petrikov or trustee Lane is going through because I know how they're dealing with this. It's very hard on all of us. So be patient with us. That's all I can say is be patient with us. Trust us. We are parents. We are grandparents in this district here. Most of our staff members have students in this district, so take that into consideration. So you don't wanna be that person that pushes for, you know, hurry up and get, get into the classroom and you find out. You know, I, I don't want that responsibility. Find out that, you know, maybe we just heard trustee Lane say there was a president of a college that passed away because of this disease, and, you know, there are many, many. I mean, we've heard about seven teachers. We don't know. We don't know what we don't know. So many other teachers have probably, you know, caught the disease and passed away. What we find out about. Let's get through this safely, and we will get into the classroom. We will be sitting all seven board members at this. I respect my colleagues here for, you know, giving us the opportunity. There's no way we can social distance at this building, at this, at this table right now than this meeting. There's four of us here, and this is probably as far as it can go. We've had three members. We've got two members. But if all seven showed up, we wouldn't be able to, to do this safely. So be patient with us. So yeah, all the other emails, I'm sure, I, I try to forward everything to Dr. Maliko, or, you know, if somebody leaves a phone number and wants a personal phone call, I don't mind calling them. So if you, if you, the parents out there, I have no problem answering your, your, your phone calls or what have you, so reach out to us. I have another, I don't know if this is gonna be under request for information or acknowledging correspondence, but I guess it starts out in cor- acknowledging correspondence. I received a, an email from a former employee, and she called it a resignation letter slash exit interview. Says, I'm gonna, this is a very lengthy email. I'm not gonna read it all, but I'm gonna try to get it to as much as I can. Some of her comments here mentioned names and buildings. I'm gonna be very, very careful. I'm gonna do this very, very slowly and just for obvious reasons. It says, Mr. Barry, the following is my quote-unquote exit interview. You have my permission to share this with the board and/or read it out loud at a board meeting. You may use my name. I know many staff members are scared of retaliation. I know they have been told by, I won't mention that, that they are not allowed to speak at board meetings on specific subject or topics. This was addressed probably about a year, maybe a couple of years ago. And I remember trustee Thorpe brought it to our attention that this, you know, this was happening, and we made it very, very clear that you are more than welcome to address the board. Obviously, you know, reach out to your administrator, you know, if you're a teacher, reach out to your administrator, follow protocol. But yes, if you have to, you will have the opportunity to speak to us. This employee, and I don't, I don't think I'm gonna mention her name, but I will forward this email to all my colleagues and Dr. Maliko. She goes on to say that, you know, telling people not to address the board at open board meeting violates the Open Meetings Act, which that is correct, and it's been proven over again and again, you know, held up at Supreme Court level, especially when it comes to teachers. Her next paragraph says, I love my time in Dearborn. Sharing this is strictly an indication of reasons why I left. That is the only thing that I was, was asked of me in my quote-unquote exit interview. At the end of this email, I've added some amazing things about Dearborn schools because there are so many amazing things. My goal is not to be unprofessional, burn bridges, or insult anyone. Without speaking up, there would be no change in this, in this world. I hope this is a step towards transparency and not seen as burning bridges. She claims in this email that she, she reached out to H R asking if there was gonna be a exit interview. And the answer was, I hope you are well. Thank you for fulfilling your commitment as school L G ambassador at blank school. We always ask the reason for resignations and/or reason for moving to another district. If you are comfortable sharing, please do best wishes. She responded by saying, I would definitely be comfortable sharing with you. Would this be done as a formal exit interview? As, or as a written response to this email? I was thinking via email was the response, but I am open to however you are most comfortable. Thank you very much. I will do it over email, was her response. No problem. I'll work on this later today. Thank you. She starts off by saying hello, blank. I am always committed to transparency, and so I will be briefly touched on several, several things. I absolutely loved my students and staff in Dearborn. This is a no way attempt to burn a bridge or just to complain. Prior to my job here, I would conduct exit interviews for a previous employer. And I want to make it clear that some reasons for leaving and consequently passing them on are a way for the district to see why some teachers may be looking elsewhere and to use this as a tool to change or improve. I'm not gonna continue that sentence because it mentions many of the buildings. She talks about student accommodations, but she gets into details here, which I'm not comfortable going into. She did say something about, she applied for an F M L A leave. Last year, I received an F M L A for an emergency hospitalization in October. I do not believe that the correspondence was clear enough for me to understand how to enter in absences or in A S O P for family leave or who to email, excuse me. Trustee Lane, I don't know how you did that. It's a couple sentences, and I'm all, can't even talk. I take in a day as F M L A. When you are having an emergency procedure, neurological in my case, clarity is essential. I received F M L A in February for the birth of my son. I emailed and called many times. I understand the closure affected a lot of why this was difficult. I was never actually granted the F M L A until June. I was even asked to provide a doctor's note to come off of F M L A in early April. So being told I did not have it in June, I would not be able to get it even after calling and email multiple times each week was extremely frustrating. I was able to garner F M L A status for my absences as it was no fault of my own that my paperwork was not accessible during the closure, but this is needlessly fell on me. In both of these cases, it is not possible to enter your own absences into A S O P. And I don't say what that process is, but I'm just reading her email, because teachers are not given the right to add their own substitutes. Because of this, we have to have a secretary enter the long-term sub for us. That is a flaw. She talks about incidents she had in this. She mentions names. I'm not comfortable reading that. She gives a lot of, just, I'll read it. The reopening plan has many great aspects. I have been following closely plans from around the state, and we have a decent plan. However, learning labs are contact with students. We were told by so-and-so that we would have equipment. My principal has stated that these will not be available. She goes into some other departmental issues here that's very detailed. I'm sure it means it would mean a lot more to you, Dr. Maliko, than it would, you know, just to say it out here. So, I would, like I said, I would forward this to you. There are endless wonderful things I can say about Dearborn. As well, these mainly surround the teachers I work with directly and the families. I am able to serve. Commuting involvement is high, and all staff are willing to go above and beyond to help the community, even if it is out of the scope of practice. Again, this is no way burning a bridge or saying that Dearborn has no good qualities to offer. I want to be clear about how I came to this decision. Perhaps I will cross paths with Dearborn again. It's a wonderful school district. And she is correct. This is a wonderful school district, and anytime we can get feedback from employees that leave us, there's a couple other things here. Dr. Maliko, like I said, you can read and maybe respond or talk to us about. Anytime we lose employees, it's probably a very good idea, and I know that we send out exit surveys. I don't know what the method is, but maybe she didn't get it in time. I'm not gonna defend here or say she's wrong or she's right. But if, if at all possible, this probably would go under, you know, request for information. I would like to see exit surveys sent out either email or, you know, just, you know, somehow, some way to all employees that have resigned since March of twenty twenty. I think it'd be very, very valuable information for H R and for us to see what's going on. There's a couple of things I've discussed before at open meetings. I've talked to my colleagues. We cannot afford to lose. This is, this is a great teacher. I'm not gonna mention her name, even though she gave me the, you know, the, the right to do so. We are losing too many good teachers, you know, today, the supplement, last week, the week before. Whatever reasons, we need to find out. And if there's a way that we can reach out to teachers, current teachers, and I understand that there's a contract. I understand that. If there's a way to say to teachers, hey, talk to us before they pull the trigger, maybe we can keep some of these teachers. We've invested a lot of money in these teachers through professional development over the years, among other things. This was an amazing teacher. I've had a chance to speak to her for, you know, for this past year. She, I did speak to her regarding the reopening. She brought a lot of great ideas. She's very, very involved. She's, she's among a lot of teachers. I mean, we don't need to get into, you know, we just saw science teachers leaving, math teachers leaving. Let's, let's talk to our teachers. Let's talk to our teachers. And with all that being said, you know, everything we talked about today, you know, we're, we're gonna back off the learning labs, my opinion only. Let's, let's keep as many people out of our buildings as much as possible moving forward for at least the next four to six weeks. If there's no reason, if there's absolute reason for staff to be in the building, by all means, I understand. We need to do what we need to do. But if, just to have them there, just, they're not, it's not necessary, not mandatory, let's have that discussion. You know, let's figure out what is in the best interest. We don't want any of our staff members getting sick from this disease because of decisions that maybe, you know, we can control. Other than that, I guess if there's nothing, enough, trustee Thorpe? Trustee Thorpe is looking at his watch. Is that a motion, trustee Thorpe?
I actually don't have a watch on today. I'm just letting you know.
Go along with me, please.
It's ten fifteen. I think we need to entertain a motion to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes.
We have a motion at the table, supported by trustee Mosip. Roll call, please. Roll call vote, please.
Lane, yes. McDonald, yes. Mead?
Yeah.
Mosip?
Yes.
Petchlikoff?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes, thank you. And I believe we're going to the next item now.
No, I wanna make a comment on your comment and your reading.
Please do.
Uh, I just wanna say I'm taking an online class myself on America's unwritten constitution. But our first enunciated freedom is freedom of speech. None of us like particularly being told what we're doing wrong and how we've done something badly, but it's what makes, it is what made us a great country, and we need freedom of speech to correct our mistakes. So I believe everyone has not just a right, but an obligation to honestly and kindly speak their mind. It's, it's our American birthright, and we should use it. Everyone should use it. That's all.
Thank you, trustee Lane. I, you know what, a lot of people I talk to.
Not this, or where are we?
I'm sorry?
Are we still in correspondence or are we down?
We are still under correspondence, yes. Uh, trustee Lane, I, you know, uh, yeah, I completely agree with what you said. Nobody will argue with you. Many times when I talk to employees, I say, why don't you call the superintendent? And they just give me that look like, are you kidding me? I tell them, the superintendent is very welcoming. I mean, he's got an open door policy. Some feel intimidated. Some feel that if they speak up, you know, they will be retaliated against, and hopefully, this email will trigger, you know, this discussion's been going on for, for many, many years. Hopefully, I mean, this young lady here that we lost, I would love to see her come back, you know, at a later time, but hopefully, this will give opportunity for teachers to come talk to Dr. Maliko or come talk to H R, come talk to somebody before they check out. Now, this is a teacher that stepped up and said, hey, look, you know, I wanna, I wanna let you know why I left. There are some teachers just leaving, some great teachers that we've, you know, been around ten years, twelve years, seventeen years, just left. They don't even care. They don't even look back. They don't even wanna talk to us about it. So those are the teachers. I mean, obviously, we respect all teachers, but those are the teachers that you just don't wanna leave. You just don't want them to leave for no, you know, for reasons that we could have controlled. So yes, not only freedom of speech, but also respect for our teachers too. Anybody else under correspondence? Thank you. Next item, please.
Board member committee and organization reports.
I don't believe we have anything. Okay, next item, please.
Board member superintendent commentary.
Anybody? Trustee Mosip?
Yes. Oh. Go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, the first thing is that, you know, over the last month, I've heard from so many parents and so many teachers, and over the last two weeks, as a parent myself, very, very frustrated with technology, even as a technologist myself. But there, there is a lot of frustration between the parent, from the parents and from the teachers as well. And this is a learning process for all of us to navigate through this, through these difficult times. I think the overlaying method or the overlaying theme from the comments that we've heard tonight is the tenacity of our teachers and how well they stepped up and as well as staff to support our students and their learnings. I would, I would like to say and go on the record to say that online learning is nowhere near in-person learning. At, at one point, we would like to be in-person learning, but unfortunately, with the numbers that we see in Dearborn, it is disheartening to see these big numbers and abnormal numbers in our city compared to the neighboring cities. And if you're wondering why the other cities are now having in-person, it's because they, their numbers are very, very small compared to ours. And if we need to see in-person learning, uh, learning labs taking place, we need our numbers to go down. So everybody must wear a mask. It's, it's the science. If you believe in science, this is what it is. And unfortunately, some people do not believe even in this disease, and that's terrible. And I'm sorry to say that if we're gonna stay in this state, probably we will not have in-person learning for a long time. The other thing I'd like to agree with is with you, President Barry, about our staff and teachers. If they don't need to be in school to minimize the spreads and to minimize the exposure, they don't need to be in school. They should be supported, and I said this last meeting, or in our study session. They should be supported with all of the technology to do their job from home. I feel very terrible for single parents, for working parents who are struggling through this hard time. And I hope that learning labs, when they begin, they will be a window for socialization between our students and staff as well. But we would have to follow the safety precautions to minimize the exposure. One thing that I'd like to also mention, I have, we've heard from the comments that there are six hours of screen time. I don't think that's the case. I have a fifth grader who's sitting for probably two to three hours a day. I, I don't see the case for five hours. That's, that's unreal. Um, so I don't know if people are just adding all of the time together with the homework to be five hours. I'd like to also, the district to emphasize also on other things, obviously, special classes, students going out outside, especially now the weather is great to play. But also focus on off-materials, offline materials. Every student now has received some packets to, so to focus more on that, and the teachers have been phenomenal at that as well. Uh, the last reminder that I have is obviously the census. I believe now they have shortened it to be the last day is to be September thirtieth for the last day to fill out the census. So if you have not filled out the census, please do. I believe we're undercounted in Dearborn a- as of the last time I checked, uh, last week, so please go ahead and, and fill out the census and remind your family to fill it out if they haven't, and your friends as well. Uh, this is our last push, our last two weeks, so please help us in doing that because it helps our schools, it helps our economy in Michigan as well as. Economy in Michigan as well as, um, uh, we, the state of Michigan may lose a seat because we're undercounted, so. I hope that everybody will take the, the, those two last weeks to remind everybody about the census. Thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, there's so much I wanna say, but I'm gonna keep it brief. Couple things. I just wanna reiterate what's already been said. Um, we hear you. We're all frustrated. We know that this is not ideal for our students. Um, I would like to check into ways of engaging like trustee Moser just said. In packets or getting kids, especially the younger kids offline. I get frustrated with technology often. I can imagine how much it is. Uh, frustrating for younger students. And again, our s- our teachers and our staff, everyone's doing a fantastic job. This is a difficult su- situation. We all need to work together. We need to understand that we are doing the best we can. This is a. Once in a hundred year, hopefully it won't happen again sooner than that pandemic. This is a pandemic. This is not, you know, s- something small. This is huge. And I hear from so many people that. Well, we can go to restaurants. We can go to bars. We can go to gyms. That's part of the problem. Just because you're allowed to doesn't mean that the, you should. If you watch what you do, stay home, take care of your families, wear a mask when you do have to go out. And don't go out unless you have to. We will get in-person learning sooner. Everybody has to work together and we're all frustrated. So, I'm done, but I had to, I had to say that.
Thank you. Trustee Petchikoff, please.
Well, I'm gonna sound a, like a broken record here as well, but um, we, we do hear. The frustration, but the frustration is, uh, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place here because we have. Community members that we need to protect from a disease and we have community members who wanna get back to life as normal. And we can't satisfy both of those, um, positions. Somebody's going to be sacrificed in that, uh, regard. Right now, um, I live in a neighborhood where last weekend my neighbors had a huge party in their backyard. No social distancing, no masks, hours of people. Shoulder to shoulder, eating and, and enjoying themselves. Another block over saw the same thing going on a couple of days ago. I will tell you that, that is part of the problem. If you want to get back. To life as normal, you have to take the time right now to sacrifice. Some of these social activities because that's why I believe some of Dearborn's numbers are higher than, um, the surrounding communities. People want to consider that they're, there's nothing going on and there is, and this is not a normal time. And you have to expect that there is going to be not a normal response to it. We've only been back in school for two weeks. We, and already everyone is throwing in the towel. I understand. I, I would hate to be a working parent. I would hate to be. A, um, high schooler or an elementary student who wants to get back with their, um, friends. Quite frankly, in my neighborhood, a lot of those kids are already socializing. Um, I'm seeing them together. Outside of the school day, I would assume. So they, they are having interaction, um, outside of their households, uh, at least in my neighborhood. So I know that. And we've heard complaints about McDonald's, uh, playground and everything. So I know the kids are, are not, um. Not having social time with other children outside. Is it ideal? God, no. We all recognize that having these, um. Classroom experiences is, is the, um, way to attend to what our students' schooling. But right now, we also understand that it has severe consequences if we get it wrong. And we can't afford to risk that at this moment. And we're going to have to take this a little slower. It's only been two weeks. We don't wanna have to do this until January, but we might. We're being prepared to try to do a phase in so that we can get these students back and the younger kids first would be ideal. Because they're the ones who are the least equipped to handle an online education. But you have to work with us. And you have to understand that we have to be kind to each other and have some patience about this and we have to go about it in a smart way. And we have to do it in a way that addresses the needs on both sides of the aisle. Our staff needs to be protected just as much as the students and the families that they go home to need to be protected. And we have to find that balance and it's going to take a little longer than any of us wanted. This is not something any of us asked for, anticipated for, or were prepared for. We're all doing this new. And nobody has this experience. So we're all going to have to work together rather than. Take jabs at each other. Um, i- i- it's. It's difficult to, uh, meet that middle ground, but we're going to have to, uh. Find a way to just. Soldier on, I guess is the best way to do it and, and move forward with this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Thorpe?
I've got two kids at home that would love to be back in a classroom. I would love to have them back in a classroom. Uh, but at the current time, it just doesn't seem realistic. There's just too many things that other people have already said. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention very quickly is in the mail today, I got something from the U S Postal Service. Talking about absentee ballots. We are coming up on the election. Many people will not wanna go to the polling places, which happen to be in our buildings. Uh, so start looking now if you wanna do an absentee ballot. Get on the, uh. Get what you need to do done, uh, so that you're ready to go for that.
Dr. Malick?
Yeah, I appreciate it. So I won't be redundant with all the comments, but I support everything that, you know, the board trustees have stated. Um, wanted to mention too, just that, yeah, we want in-person learning. In-person learning is best. We've, we've been saying that. Uh, we wanna get there. We were hoping that with the learning labs, that would be the phase in and then the numbers. And I talked to you this afternoon with our attorney and I, I'm concerned. I was very concerned last night. When I saw that and that's why we've had to make that decision to hold off on that. So we kinda all, like you said, need to work together, do our part. We're doing our part. You know, we're in the mass, social distancing. Uh, we're, we've sent out through the district, you know, this is a requirement for all staff. And if someone isn't, we're gonna, we will enforce it. Um, as far as in the building, just, you know, that's why. The reason we needed in the building is because of the learning lab. Well, now. You know, like a couple buildings, we gave some flexibility to and we'll, we'll look at that again, but we will long-term need them. We've also. Um, not that I wanna compare, but you know, we worked with Jane when we came up with that, that number of days. And there's a lot of other districts that are not, didn't do it that way. So I would say we tried to be flexible, but I understand that, especially when the numbers have gone up higher. So we'll be very sensitive and that's my last comment is that as these comments get in, it's not, it, you know, it is the students. But like you said, it's the community members, it's the staff. So not only the twenty-one thousand students. But the twenty-five hundred plus staff members that are in the district. So if we have the numbers high and we have people in person. We're also exposing staff, then community and everyone. So again, I support everyone's comment. We just need to work together and hopefully the numbers will get better as people do follow the rules and social distance. And we'll continue to advocate and be role models for what we know, uh, is required and, and we'll continue to do the right thing. And I appreciate the support of the board because again, none of us wanna be in this situation, but we're in a, we're in a crisis. And we come together and we work together and that's how we get through it. And the online learning will get better, um, you know, and hopefully we get out of it. But, um, it, it will continue to get better and, um, you know, it, it is a system that we're forced to use right now. And we have to make those tough decisions. So appreciate the support of the board and the community.
Chair Wonten on motion to extend the meeting fifteen minutes?
Support.
Motion support. The roll call vote, please.
Lane, yes. Uh, McDonald.
Yes.
Mead.
Yeah.
Moser.
Yes.
Petchikoff.
Yes.
Thorpe.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes, thank you. Uh, anybody else under commentary?
Yes, I'll just suggest that, uh, one thing people can do to. Uh, make a gesture is to get a flu shot. In that I believe includes, uh, children are recommended. I, uh, somebody maybe can correct me on that. But definitely adults should be getting a flu shot right now.
Six months and older.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Request for information and or future agenda items.
Trustee Thorpe?
Please, President Barry?
Trustee McDonald, let's go ahead.
Yes, um, I had wanted to do this earlier and when I was presented with her, when we were given the presentation. They had showed, um, current COVID, uh, and. Infections as well as, uh, quarantines. We've been getting the information through, um, incident reports. And that's just coming here and there and it's hard to get a grasp or a good picture of where we are at this moment. In different buildings. So I would like that information. Uh, disseminated in a better way where it's easier to look at it at any given time and you know where we're at. So and also as, uh, like groups fall off, like if we have a sporting group that is currently in quarantine. As that two weeks pass, that goes off the roll. So we are able to really get a good, uh, look at any. Um, and any given time where we're at.
Trustee Thorpe?
I'd like to get, uh, an idea with the students that are in the virtual learning program. Uh, what the numbers are like, where do they come from? What are the, the actual numbers from each school in our district that are attending virtual?
Probably part of that report is how many came from out of the district.
Yes.
Yeah, so, or let's, let's rephrase that. New to the district.
Yeah, yeah, you guys.
Not out of the district.
That's how I always said it, right? See, you're like me now. You're like me. I knew what I meant.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Uh, yeah, I, and I don't even need a special report on this, but I kinda would like to see. How are we, i- if we're gonna be in this for even another four weeks or whatever? Um, and we hear a lot of talk, okay, we've done a report on the athletics. How are we handling any of the other spe- specials, the music, the arts, the, you know, band? Any, any of those other programs, um, that help enrich any of our students, you know, they. How, how are we adjusting to, uh. Getting, getting them at least some introduction to it?
That's a good one, yes. Well, yeah, just wanna make sure that, yeah, earlier we talked about sports. I don't want anybody walking away from this meeting thinking that. We value sports over anything else.
And we don't.
That's just part of.
But we can only do so many reports at one sitting anyhow.
Exactly, exactly. Anybody else? Did you have something?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else?
I, I asked about this last time and hopefully we can get it next meeting, but for the special ed students also how we're delivering. The curriculum and how we're helping them navigate through the, the system.
Especially since the learning labs are now going to be.
Yeah, that, there is a report already created. Mr. Salee, I don't know if you received it, but I can send it, um.
It might be a good one to, uh, put on the next.
Are you, are you on a presentation? Oh, I got you. Okay, I'm sorry. I see what you're saying.
Did you see his presentation that he did with Healthy Dearborn?
I did not.
Okay.
Okay.
It might, I didn't, I didn't get to, um, log into it.
Okay, we get Mike. Sorry, I thought you meant.
Yeah.
That might be.
Okay, if there aren't any other requests, what are next item, please?
Future virtual in-person meeting dates, Monday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty, H F C meeting. Seven P M via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at. W W W dot H F C dot E D U slash board i-then meeting i-then schedule. Monday, October twelfth, twenty twenty, P twelve Board of Education meeting, seven P M at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Following the guidelines of the Governor's Executive Order and virtually available for viewing via YouTube. Live, W W W dot YouTube dot com forward slash D P S com, C O M M D E P T. Facebook Live, W W W dot Facebook dot com slash Dearborn Public Schools. And cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night. We are adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
See ya.